I've been in the name of Jesus, Lord, we thank you for this day. They've never seen before, God, we ask you just to bless us in this meeting, and we ask you to let everything be done decent and in order. Now we thank you for your grace, your mercy, your love, your kindness, in Jesus' name we pray.
Thank you Councilor Ball. Now we have our reading of our minutes. Councilmen, council members, if you have any questions about the meeting minutes that presented today. If not, we entertain the motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented. Would they move a second to approve the meeting minutes as presented? All those in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed and opinions, the chair of the ayes have it. The motion here, item number one on unfinished business is the garbage rate. On last week, last council meeting, we had also discussion about the garbage rate. The increase is pending. Once we have a work session to discuss. The update that I got last yesterday from the commission was they were still negotiating their contract with Allen Waste. If they stick with Allen Waste, then we can assume that seventy dollars is gonna stay the same per tonnage. And then we'll have to factor that in to what it'll cost us. If they go somewhere different, it should change and would go higher than seventy dollars a ton. And we would have to just raise a quarter. Currently, our sanitation bill is a four thousand dollar increase this month in sanitation. So that was not in our budget or allocated. So once we get some more hard numbers, we'll have that. We have reached out to some other areas, as you all know. Some are not, well, none are unwilling to take us, except for one, Black Warrior in Tuscaloosa, they have told us no. There's one, there're two other ones, one in Mississippi and one in South Alabama, that have accepted us, but they are at a long distance. So that being said, no new information on the garbage rate increase, so I have any questions? Alright, there's no other questions, we'll leave that on unfinished business. Item number one, under their new business is our gravel truck. We currently do not have a gravel truck that enables us to pick up large pieces of equipment, and large pieces of trash, bulk trash, limbs, that nature. That being said, for the last two to three months, we've been looking for some gravel trucks in the area of where we're able to afford to pay, which I have permission to use twenty-five thousand dollars. Each time I bid that, we've been outbid. There's currently a new, now it's not new to us, it's not new to them, but it's new to us. Currently, a two thousand and four Freightliner M two one oh six gravel dump truck that's being sold by Rayburn, in Rayburn, Alabama, by their volatile fire department. That particular gravel truck was utilized from their city, and they gave it to their fire department so they can use to generate funds for some of their projects. There doesn't wrong with the truck, it works as advertised. I spoke with the gentleman, I thought it was the same one they had listed previously, but it's actually a different one. So they have a new one. So what I ask for, the council's permission is to allow me to spend up to forty thousand dollars to bid on this truck. If it gets to that point, the bid closes on that on tomorrow at eleven thirty, I believe. That being said, a new gravel truck for all practical purposes costs about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The used gravel truck that I presented previously was about ninety thousand dollars. So forty is somewhere in the middle of that, and it's something that we need, so that way we're able to service citizens to pick up sanitation, limbs, trash. So my question for the council is to allow me to bid up to forty thousand dollars on this particular gravel truck, Freightliner M two one oh six dump gravel truck.
Just the one that pick up, can't deliver.
No, no, he just ain't going with.
That's it. I bid at twenty-five thousand dollars already, and we already got outbid, you can see on there it's thirty-one thousand five hundred and two dollars.
What miles and size and edge, you said pretty, so what kind of edge do you have, Lexful, Capella?
Got a Capella, under sixty-two thousand miles.
You don't want to go look here though, how we gonna do this? Because we don't want to spend that kind of money, you know. I know if the diesel, then I deal with whatever day. And we need to look at it and make sure when we spend that kind of money.
So this online, right?
Yeah, you can get it online, but I'm saying like, well, cookies, a baby, if nobody diesel, you go, go look at it. I know we need one, but we just don't want to get the money.
Yeah.
I agree with you, but also we need one, also we need one, that's not bad, we need one.
We need one, but you can also, you get some on auction, we could buy some, as here with no water, you buying somebody else from.
Right.
We don't want, we don't want to get. Nobody else from.
Jump into something that you really don't know the key.
I done got brought with by a semi truck myself. Listen to that, listen to this, you know, auction league, went and bought it last week.
You willing to travel to?
Yeah, I'm just trying to see.
Rayburn, Alabama?
We might, we might get.
Rayburn, Alabama?
Where they moving, South Alabama?
He stopped off.
He couldn't go look at.
I mean, I know, I noticed the severity, I noticed the severity of trying to get a truck for the city, but moving that quick, I make them all, you know, made I know you would not per se buy it. You just trying to get, to get a bid up to that much, but I think, I mean, we need to look a little more, we need to look a little more to see if you buy something, you know, in that, in that price range, I mean.
What's all with the one we got, can you put money in, get it going? Should we get, should we get it for?
Well, the current truck that we have now is from nineteen ninety-five. I don't think it, we the last incident I think that we got, I brought before the council, that to fix that nineteen ninety-five engine was about twelve thousand dollars, somewhere around there. So that being said, I don't feel comfortable dumping twelve thousand dollars into something as old as I am, and I'm a young cookie, but I ain't as young as I know anyone. But saying that to say, this particular truck, from the research that I've done on it, I know I don't meet your guys qualifications as decent mechanics, but I, you know what I'm saying, I do think that this is a good truck. It's a good lot, I spoke back on where they got the vehicle from. And even if it's allowed to bid on it, if you willing to go up in the morning and go down to Ranburn and put this, and look at it, it's only about a three hour drive. Check it out, see what it is, and if it's something that we need, because these trucks don't come up often. And this is nationwide, Allenville, it's a nationwide, nationwide auction cycle. The last one I looked at was in Tampa, I was actually in Tampa on last week, and I looked at one of the trucks that I was gonna ask for consideration to bid on, and it was a disaster, I didn't, that's why I didn't present it today. Tampa used that, Tampa Florida used that truck very well. This truck, after speaking with the gentleman, and seeing where the trucks came from, doing a little research on my own from the being numbered, knowing how good it's been maintained, I feel comfortable with it, or as I was gonna present it to the council. But again, if the council's willing to come or go to Ranburn tomorrow, then I welcome that opportunity to go and look at it. It shouldn't take, you know, too long, check it out, see if it's what we can utilize, but I know it's something that we can dive straight on.
You are, the thing about that, I don't care where you go, you can't leave your driver at it. Go look at it, if somebody, if it's ain't clean on, but everybody sprayed it off. I work myself, so if there's no oil leaks, I work myself, you see, you ain't gotta notice you get drive down the road and start using it here. I would feel better though if they gave us something on the come board. I'm not against the truck, but I would feel better if they wanted us something. Every, every day, at least we gotta get it here, and start using it to tell. We go down and look, it's like gonna be clean on it, and if we know oil leaks, know fill it on that, gonna be gonna spray it off. Everybody know that, or they know we come.
Understood. So I, I say it like a, like an old man.
You can get them to do that right there.
Yeah, I say this like an old man, and they may, and they may give us a warranty, I don't know, that's probably not lifeless, but they may give us a warranty on it. You know, it's just like when you sell a car, you know, you got your, if you bought it new, it has its quirks, but you buying what you buying. If we wanna buy a new one, we can buy a new one. It cost two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, or two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and we can buy a new one. If we financing and do it that way, then you know it has it. Now, that's only gonna have about a three year warranty, two, three year warranty on it, and you will only get about half the value back on your truck. So even if we invest that two hundred twenty-five, you're looking like getting one eleven, one fifteen, somewhere around that back on the trading, and if you decide to do that. So that being said, I'm gonna keep presenting options as I find them. If, if, I just want, wanted to be put out there that I, we trying to, trying to look, and that these are some options that we have.
We, yeah, all that, we said, but if what kind of situation we in, if I see stuff I don't know, say I'm rolling, he picked up. He may picked up. We way around here, and they know we gonna be paying two hundred thousand dollars. Got one chain. Whether it be yes or no, both, I mean, we should go, we don't want to do it, don't vote for. Go up, yeah, eventually gonna, I'll do, go for two hundred thousand dollars. I'm not saying, we go ahead, we go vote tonight, you go yes or no, you go yes or no, you go yes or no. That's what I don't think you said, I don't.
Get somebody else truck.
We, we.
You ain't never seen it like you said, they can wash the name off. Clean out all, my name make a bathroom.
Yeah, you right.
If you put it, if you put that in motion, then we'll. Ah, make the motion to vote on this up to four forty thousand dollars. I make the motion. I say, would they move a second? All those in favor, let it be known by, well, we'll go ahead and do a voice motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Alright.
I do.
All those in favor, raise your hand. The pin and chair of the ayes have it. Now, that being said, I still wanna go down there and look at it. So Mr. Prue is gonna go down there tomorrow in the morning, look at it before we go out put a dollar on it. So if y'all would ride behind him, or go whatever, then that's, that's the game plan, that's what we gonna do, because I wasn't gonna spend no money on something that I didn't see. But the bid closed at eleven, so he's gonna be up there around nine. So he'll probably leave about about six, six thirty in the morning, if we have to get there, to look at it, and make sure that it's something worth, worth bidding on. And if it's not worth bidding on, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna bid anything on it. But I would just need that discretion to look at it, just to let the council know.
Look, look, look at it, it's fine, I can see it from here, but it don't mean. You know, we're looking at it, it's, you gotta have a rental. So we just, just go ahead and get the truck, we got, we, everything we got is used. If you get it used, it can be in a truck, in a truck, from anybody, in a truck. Okay, if you get it from, everybody can tell you that's the best truck in the world, when they try to sell it. Because if I was selling to you, I would say that's the best truck in the world. So ain't no way, ain't no way to tell. I mean, is this used truck, or another used truck, or another used truck? You still gonna have power, and looking at it, if you really look at, see the doors on it, or somebody, you can't tell I driving it, unless you drive it everywhere and use. I mean, you got, hell over there, you got, you go, you go, you look, but you looking, but what you back?
We got, item number two on the, on the new business, it's a sprayer. First, we were looking to get a side by side deal, so that way we put a sprayer that currently have on there, so we can give vegetation in certain areas. Side by side has gone up by, we allocated fifteen, I think, thousand dollars for it. They gone up to about twenty thousand dollars for a decent, eighteen to twenty thousand dollars for a decent side on, not side on, side by side. So instead of doing a side by side, we looked at our old equipment that we have not been utilizing, and trying to repurpose it. We have a tractor, we got two tractors, actually two small tractors. This is a fifty-five gallon sprayer, it hooks up to your P T O on a tractor, and it utilizes the P T O shaft to generate pressure to spray, like fifty-five gallons. And I think that it'll be beneficial for what we need. We haven't bought a sprayer probably in the last, I mean, that's what you hear, this is from capital of funds, and then that way we can use this instead of the handheld spray to pass out. The cost of it is eighteen hundred dollars and ninety cents. Eight, one thousand eight hundred nine dollars and ninety cents. Are there any questions about that?
I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with us buying stuff. I have a problem with us keeping it up, and, and when we buy it. I mean, not taking care of the stuff, and that, that's why we kind of end up in the situation that we end up in. It's because when we buy things, they're not taking care of it.
Well, we never bought a sprayer, we never bought a dump truck. The only thing that we really bought is a gar, is a garbage truck that was out when we got in. Everything that we got, since I've been here, we take maintenance sheets, we look at it, we overview things, we look at lawnmowers, we look at tractors, everything. So, you know, maybe in the past, that was something that might have happened, but currently, we've had, you will break down under this, under you all's administration that we had previous. So that being said, they know my expectation on keeping things up. Like y'all would go out, anytime y'all would go out there and look at stuff, y'all came from the police, you know I'm on him, I'm about police vehicles, getting them maintained, tires put on them, brakes, oil changes. You know what I'm saying, even down to cleaning the garbage truck, I know it's a garbage truck, but it still need to be cleaned. So I think, I jokingly call it my, my maz, our mazerati of Allenville, because it costs a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars for that garbage truck. And that's about how much a mazerati cost at that time. So saying all that to say, we gonna make sure that we hold people accountable, but we just gotta have the equipment to do some of the things we, you know. And like I said, if it's not, y'all hold me accountable, y'all get on me, that's, that's part of why I'm here. The things that we've gotten, we can't help accident, accidents happen, not saying that we, that everything is perfect. But what I will say is, we do a better maintenance job, kind of keep up with our stuff, reason things, oil things, and that, of that nature. So that being said, if there, if there's a motion on the floor to accept the spray. Would you move? Is there a second? Second, all those in favor, are there any other discussion about spraying? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? The pin and chair of the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Item number three, dumping trailer. I have this on there just in case we didn't go through, go through with the gravel truck, this dumping trailer was listed as a two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three. That one is not the, not the same model, because he didn't have that one in stock, but it'll be the same size, the neck on it will be different. It will be a gator neck, on that particular, it's a hundred and two by twenty-two by four. And it was, it was twenty-three thousand dollars for that particular trailer. That would, that could be a ball here to hook up to a truck, so that way we can pull it, try to get drunk. But if we, I just wanna put that on agenda, not necessarily for purchase, but just so that way you can see, that's the, I guess, second option, to have something to dump items on the, as we pick up things. The trailer that we currently use is a transport trailer for lawnmowers. It shouldn't be used for for hauling, what we hauling sometimes, but we trying to make sure we keep Allenville as clean as possible, so we utilizing. But if this gravel truck, dump, dump through, then that's the second option that we looking at buying, not looking at trying to do that now, but just trying to come up with other options, just in case. So are there any questions about that?
If you get this here, they gonna have a goofing, I mean, you gotta have a little truck with a goofing on the bed, put.
No, what I was saying was, that's, the trailer is gonna look like that, but the neck, the neck is gonna be a ball neck to put on a ball of the truck. Right, right, but it's gonna be the same size as that trailer. So that's just a third option, a second option rather, but just in case if we don't get it, just trying to take down the road. Are there any questions about that? Alright, item number four, purchase of a new police vehicle. Currently, we haven't purchased a new police vehicle since, the last one we purchased was on a grant, and we got that grant through a deck, no, specifically, no. It was a Joss, Jag Grant, it was a Jag Grant, from the state of Alabama, by way of the federal government, through the Department of Justice. So the last truck that we bought was back in two thousand eighteen, currently, we paid it off early, utilizing some of the funds that we, that we acquired through the, we paid one of the vehicles off early, using the fund that we acquired through the, through the police fund, and we paid it off. We currently just have one vehicle that we have, that's currently being on payment. That vehicle is, that vehicle payment is five hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents currently, and it has less than six months on that. We already budgeted out for the, for two vehicle payments for police vehicles, and currently we have additional police staff. We do have two individuals in the police academy, police academy, police academy currently, try to say that three times. Police academy currently, however, we wanna make sure when they get out, that all our police vehicles are active and operational and able to move. We always, normally when we get our police cars, we go through Bankport, they're the lease and fleet management company. Currently, they have a two thousand and twenty-three Chevy Tahoe. And it would, the payment on it would be six thirty-nine per month. Currently, we already have allocated in our budget five hundred dollars a month for the, for the truck that we paid off early, and we hadn't had that payment in the last three months, because we paid it off about three months ago. So that being said, the chief has requested a new vehicle for the fleet, and it's good to try to kind of age them in, so that way we don't come up with something that's too old. Are there any questions about, about the request? Car truck. This is a two thousand and twenty-three Chevy Tahoe.
Tahoe, oh Tahoe, I got.
Mr. Lou, Council Lou.
I'm doing somebody a little thing.
I'm, I'm, I'm for the car, I issue you, because while we say, in time the criminal car, it's running the police car, we intro.
How many, how many, how many cars do we have ready now?
Three.
Three?
One, four.
And how many officers do you have on staff?
Not enough, I mean, we got enough, but I love the, should run what we got, because we dumping it out now.
Okay. And this, this payment's gonna come out of what?
This payment will come out of, we already budgeted for the whole year that we was gonna have this amount, coming out five hundred, or actually about six hundred dollars for the payment. The excess will come out of capital, because that's, this is the capital, the capital expenditure because of police cars. So we've already allocated, kind of like we anticipated having a budget, because we didn't anticipate paying it off early. But because we paid it off early, now we have that built in our budget, so it's something that just will continually roll over. And then also, we have some income that come in from these cars that are getting turned back in, or getting replanned, and replay, and repo. And if somebody here got, somebody got a car back there behind the police station, please ma'am, please sir, go get your car behind the police station, because we don't want to keep it no longer than, look, get it. So that's where we get those funds from, as well as some small court funds that, that, that the council has.
So basically, they carry, they on the way?
Correct. Outside of about a hundred dollars. Another question, Council Lou, what you got? I, I, I entertain a motion to approve the police vehicle, purchase of a police vehicle, which is two thousand and three Chevy Tahoe. I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-three Chevy Tahoe. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Yeah, I'm ready.
I'm setting a motion, but two thousand twenty-three.
Would you move a second, all those in favor, were there any other discussion first? If there's no discussion, all those in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? The pin and chair of the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Item number five, resolution for, a special resolution for gun violence. This is a resolution that says the following, resolution for gun violence awareness month. This is a resolution recognizing June as Gun Violence Awareness Month in Allenville, Alabama, whereas gun violence continues to plague our communities with devastating effects on community, on families, neighborhoods throughout many cities, and whereas it is crucial that we come together as a city to raise awareness about the impact of gun violence and work to prevent it from occurring in the future. And whereas June is nationally recognized as Gun Violence Awareness Month, with communities across the country coming together to promote greater awareness and understanding of this critical issue. And whereas by designating June as Gun Violence Awareness Month in Allenville, we can join other cities and states in promoting education, advocacy, and support for those affected by gun violence. Be it therefore resolved that we hereby do declare June two thousand and twenty-three as Gun Violence Awareness Month within the city of Allenville, and encourage all residents to participate in activities designed to raise awareness of this issue and to support those affected by gun violence and work towards ending this epidemic in our city and beyond. Be it further resolved that Gun Violence Awareness Month, we recognize the efforts of organizations and individuals who are working tirelessly to prevent gun violence and support survivors. We reaffirm our commitment to building safer communities for all, dated June the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a motion to accept the resolution for Gun Violence Awareness Month? Uh, is there a motion to accept the resolution for gun violence awareness month?
Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed, in the opinion of the chair, ayes have it, motion carries. Item number s- uh, item number six, uh, special presentation to Councilman Robert Wilder. At this time, we'll have a special presentation by a member of our community to Councilman Wilder at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're here, uh, from the Aliceville High School Grand Reunion. And we are, this year was the first year that we decided to recognize an individual that has always participated in the reunion. And we wanted to bring special recognition to an individual that has gone above and beyond the call of what a normal individual would do. And this year, we decided to recognize as the Aliceville High School Grand Reunion Special Citizen, Mr. Robert Wilder. So, Mr. Wilder, before you come, I want all Mr. Wilder classmates to come and stand right here, if y'all don't mind. All y'all come on, glasses seventy-four, y'all come on up. You know, I think I remember reading in the Bible saying that, uh, Hebrew is recognized just about everywhere except home. And it's truly an honor to recognize, be recognized by your own people. And so, glasses seventy-four, y'all come on up and realize. We have a plaque that we're gonna read in just a minute, Mr. Wilder, you come on around there, sir.
I'm coming around, so I guess it's my night I can have a chance to say what it's like. My daughter, my daughter's also glad to say.
I, I wanna say this right here, you know, we have one that is called Daddy Yeljacket. But now, Mr. Wilder's not Daddy Yeljacket. He's one of the eldest sons of Daddy Yeljacket, so now I'm gonna refer to him as son of Daddy Yeljacket. But, uh, he has always been involved with the school system, he's worked in the school system, as we very well know. He, uh, was very instrumental in the football program. And I was thinking earlier this afternoon, I believe he even played football.
Back in the day?
Back in the day. But he has not quit. He has invested in the community, uh, the center that he has down there, he has always opened his doors to individuals that will come, uh, in need of a place. Uh, whenever we go down there, it's always in order. And the Grand Reunion was, I'll just be honest with everyone, the Grand Reunion was hurting this year. And it was at a point where we really had to just contemplate, do we, are we gonna have it or are we not gonna have it? And we had to go, Mr. Spencer, uh, Chief Jones, we had to go, we had to talk Mr. Wilder. Mr. Wilder, listen, we are hurt, you know, we got a late start and we need some help. And he graciously opened his doors for us to make it happen. And I might add that this is probably one of the more successful reunions, we had all of them been good, because when you see in your home people, there's nothing like that. So, we just wanted to commend, uh, Brother Wilder, uh, Mr. Spencer, guys, what do you want to say?
No, I just wanna thank Cookie, I call him Cookie. Everybody know him, you know? Here and I don't know where to work, Cookie, don't forget the phone and call, we talk here and I become good friends and everything, and I just, I really appreciate it. Well, Robert, you're Robert.
President. Um, this award reads, special honor award presented to Robert Cookie Man Wilder. In spec- in special recognition of the many years of unselfish love, devotion, and dedication to serve our school and the Aliceville community. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts, Aliceville Grand Reunion Committee Members, two thousand twenty-three. Thank you.
We, we did, uh, the night of the, uh, when it was a hori- that we said we wanna type the other day. But I, I don't wanna go back with refreshment, cause I didn't say it, I certainly appreciate the people. If, so this award is good, but the only award I deserve real is surrounding myself with good people. There's no way I can screw without Cookie. Knows, knows what I'm saying, not negative folks. I said, Cookie, the one that God put you with. And then when you keep doing that right there, you're gonna start to move. But that's, that's the award I want, when I leave here, I tell my daughter, the only award I wanna see at, at my car, don't put Robert on it, put Cookie man. That says, uh, he was the one that loves surrounding himself with good people. Now, that's, that's my word to all y'all, surround yourself with good people. Believe them, believe the folks along. No bad people coming, they're not gonna do that. But hold your back. So, that's my speech, now she will thank all y'all for coming and everything, or we all, anybody got some refreshment tonight, it, it your place or located at your house.
Ladies Councilmen, thank you, uh, Captain Community Members for giving us this special presentation, uh, for someone who's definitely well deserving. We appreciate all the service they did, and it's not only for his, for, uh, the city, city of Aliceville, but also for all those individuals who, uh, are quietly thankful for everything that he does around the community. So, we thank you, we appreciate you, and, uh, we're gonna give you a flower now. Mr. Cookie Man, now he doesn't like how I'm calling him that, he always Mr. Cookie Man, my mom and dad would have been telling me, say Cookie Man, so I just say Mr. Cookie Man. That being said, we're gonna move on to, uh, and finish out with our business, Councilman Wilder, are there any questions about the bills asked presented to the council tonight? There's no questions, I make a motion to approve the bills asked presented? While I entertain a motion to approve the bills asked presented? Has been motioned, is there a second? Been moved a second, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. In the chair, ayes have it, motion carries. Police Department Chief?
Yeah, yeah, real quick, just kickback real short on that, uh, resolution, reference to our gun violence. Just last two months alone, Aliceville Police Department have seized over ten fifteen guns right here at Aliceville. So, it is, it is something serious. Uh, if, if we put out information to the community in reference to gun, uh, just training you on updated laws in reference to the gun, please ma'am, please sir, come out and, and know your, your laws, your new laws on your gun, because legislators send us, uh, passed bills, passed laws, and if anybody need to be updated, educated on it, it need to be us. Because law enforcement, we have a duty, uh, we have stipulations on what, uh, we can seize your weapon for just because they passed a law real short to say that you can carry a pistol or gun without committing. It's still some small print that you don't know, okay? Uh, if you are already convicted felon, you feel like just because they passed a law, you can't say nothing to me about my gun. That's the automatic way to go to jail. So, you need to know, uh, what to do, what not to do. This, this right here is a touch of something for me, you all know as well as I do, I just brought it up a couple weeks ago, last council that we had, in reference to our hospital. Got thrown down on our hospital from our Senator, I'm gonna tell yourself for being mayor. But our first responders, again, law enforcement, medics, fire department, we're limited at what we can do. Uh, because our ambulance base, we had to go back, they either run it to Tuscaloosa, Northport, or Columbus. This is what I'm gonna advise, heat gas in your car. Because the ambulance might be in Tuscaloosa, they might be in Northport, they might be in Columbus. If it's your lower one and you feel like they taking a little bit too long, turn your flashes on and get them medical assistance. Okay, we, we, we limited at what we can do. If we transport, there's a lot that is young love, so again, do what you need to do in reference to getting your folks some attention. You see, uh, medical, that's it, uh, air evac, helicopter, uh, PHI, we had two men one day here in Aliceville. If you're not signed up, get signed up, you know, with your helicopter call, they can be from Fed or Demoplas in about twelve, fifteen minutes. If they're not transporting somebody else, so. I think that's all I got, I just want y'all to make sure that y'all look out before you say that gun violence is, is serious.
Oh, what, what, what they ought to piggyback on the chief, um, not sure if John Q. Pucke knows about the new AR, uh, rule, um, that recently came out. Uh, I know many of us are, are, uh, gun toll people, um, and you may be familiar with the AR weapon, you know, on the back of the buck stop, it has a, uh, it has a shoulder, uh, stop that you used to be able to have. But now, according to the new ATF rule, it has been deemed illegal. So, uh, that's something that if you want more information about, you can talk to the chief. But, um, about two weeks ago, we gave a gun information class. Uh, we're gonna continue to do that. Right, and we're gonna continue to do information on guns, uh, we know y'all don't wanna give up your guns, I understand, cause you wanna have something, something happen. But we wanna make sure that you know how to use, uh, said weapon and keep it safe. So that way, little Johnny or little Susan don't get a hold of it and accidentally hurt somebody. So, we're gonna continue to do these classes, we're gonna continue to push out information, uh, and give it and put it in your hands to be able to come. So, we thank our chief for that, as well as our council for allowing these type activities to happen. Thank you, chief. Uh, street department. Uh, on our, on our street, um, department to kinda piggyback, as one can see, uh, our Liam pickup has been a little slower. We are, and the three pickup, we are getting to piles. Please ma'am, please sir, uh, call the men to the city hall. I keep personal track of, of the, uh, of all the teachers that come through the city hall to make sure that we, um, are at least picking up some of the, at least a few piles a week, or picking them up by hand. Um, so just know that it, it takes a little while longer than just using, uh, equipment. But please ma'am, please sir, if you have that, call it in to the city hall, we, we'll generate a ticket. And then we'll be able to, uh, we'll be able to move forward with it, uh. Fire Department?
Yes, uh, they'll be sending out a grant, um, from Board of the Commission, uh, to the, to Aliceville. Our fire department will be, uh, submitting a grant application. I think it's about ten thousand dollars, um, to that grant, I will apply for that. I'm also, I wanna thank the city for the helipad that they have, uh, placed at the armory, we've been using it and have been in operation, um, that's, that's good, that's a good thing. Um, we have more and more calls on multiple calls using ambulance, um, just Sunday, I think, it was like maybe an hour and a half on wait time for ambulance. And we had to airlift two people from our school.
So, thank you chief for what you guys do and trying to, you can say, uh, what chief made mention on the helicopter pad. We got a grant to do a basketball court, uh, and it's a basketball court that's gonna be behind the National Guard Armory, uh. But we also have secondary use for it as a helipad. So that way, we're able to get multi-usage out of the same, uh, piece of equipment. So, that way, when that helicopter comes, it has someone stable to land and able to, uh, make it happen. So, we thank the chief, uh, and others who made, uh, that special project happen. We don't have any, uh, report on the Chamber Commerce, uh, the only thing I wanna say with that, there will be a movie night, uh, the dates are pending. It's looking like somewhere between July the thirteenth or July the twentieth. Once that information comes through, I'll make sure I let everyone know, the movie that will be playing will be The Lion King, Lion King. Uh, there's no, uh, museum report at this time, is anyone, uh, in the audience that has a report, would like to say anything at this time? Oh, sorry, go ahead, we got a report for our.
Good evening, uh, ma'am, city manager, uh, council members. I want to announce that we will be having our Taste of Aliceville on Saturday celebrating Juneteenth. Uh, we will have, um, blues and gospel, uh, the history of Juneteenth. And we will be having old time food, soul food, so come out, it starts at, uh, ten o'clock, sorry, eleven o'clock until two thirty. Um, come out and have a good time, um, everything is free, we will have bouncy and, um, different slides for the children. So, it's a family affair and it is a free event, that's Saturday, um, eleven to two thirty. Thank you.
Is there any, uh, public comments at this time?
I'm gonna be Shannon Cobb and I live over on Ninth Place Southeast, the back of my, I'm the only yellow house on that street. So, the back of my house is to Farther Acres and the front of my house is Ninth Place Southeast. Is there any way possible you all can think about putting a speed bump down through there? Because I don't know why they think they on Daytona five hundred. I'm gonna ride a curve and then make the right coming up on my street. Um, I don't know whether or not you know me, Shepherd Clark, at the end of the street, her grandchildren are always up there playing in the street. And I, I have stopped people who told them to slow down. So, is there any way possible you all can address that Ninth Place Southeast? Because the street is not even a fourth of a mile and, and they just wanna drag strip down here.
Well, I'm not gonna promise that we gonna get one, cause I don't know if we will during this time, this season, or, I say this season, cause we're at the end of our budget year. But it is something that we can look at for our next budget year, we, uh, we didn't wanna just put speed bumps all over town and kinda mess up the ambiance of the city by, you know, by some of that, but there are some areas where we looked at that they needed some speed bump, uh, and we placed them down already, and the most recent ones that we put down are on Fifteenth Street. There was some requests to do, uh, speed bumps on Fifteenth Street and it's a drag, a quote, the drag strip, cause it's about a quarter mile run, uh, with no stop signs, uh, and people, uh, utilize it for, for things that it probably shouldn't have been utilized for. Uh, the other side of that is, uh, once we get the speed breaker down, any vandalism that we catch you do, not you, this, this, any. Any vandalism that we catch anyone do, uh, you will be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. Uh, I say that because the ones on Fifteenth Street, they thought they could pull them up, but they found out that they were bolted down to the ground. So, uh, if we catch you trying to pull speed bumps up, I promise you, you gonna wish that you hadn't have did that yet. Uh, and while I'm speaking on, on, uh, vandalism, uh, in Aliceville, we're trying to have more nice things. Uh, we're trying to have nice roads, we fix, uh, the council has fixed up the, uh, auditorium, not auditorium, the kitchen in the, in the, uh, auditorium for the city hall. Uh, we got new refrigerators, a new freezer, new kitchen appliances. And we've had those things for less than a year and a half. And found out recently that someone has vandalized our, uh, some of our equipment. Now, we got cameras and we gonna run it back and we gonna find out who did it, but we gonna continue to have nice things in Aliceville. Now, we got cameras, and we gonna run it back, and we gonna find out who did, but we gonna continue to have nice things in Aliceville, but what we not gonna do is tell. So, please ma'am, please sir, be mindful, also at our city park, recently we had, uh, someone who had some items at a concession stand, uh, and those items were, were, uh, were in their concession stand and secured, and someone thought it was their stuff, even though they didn't pay for it, and decided to take a five dollar, a five hand discount on it, and take everything out of that concession stand which, uh, was not theirs. That is wrong, the police are investigating, they have dusted fingerprints, so I suggest that whoever it is come forward, because that's something that we're not gonna accept. Uh, we're here to help make the community better, but we're only six people that sit up there, it's four thou, it's two thousand four hundred and five people or so, according to the census, that live in Aliceville, so it's up to the two thousand and four hundred other people to make Aliceville a team to be better. We can't do it all by ourselves, uh, so I'm gonna get off my soapbox on that, I'm gonna pass it off to, uh, this, uh, councilor involved.
I just have a, um, statement to make about the, you know, Seventeenth Street, um, the, I guess they tore the road up after we paved, so I, what, why was that?
Yeah, so what happened was when they paved Seventeenth Street, there was a collapse, a corvette collapsed, so it was an old corvette, so what they did was instead of just patching in that one spot, they tore out the whole side and then repaved the whole, the whole section, so that way it wasn't a disjoint, it'll be a, the same joint going across, so they put a new corvette pipe under that, and they repaved it, um, with the paper company they had, and also while they were here, they finished out the road to Country Lane, uh, subdivision, because that road had not been paved, and they came back to finish that road.
And it's a, like, where they, I guess where they took the corvette out and put the new one in, it's a dip, so they didn't smooth it like it was, they kind of, they just didn't add.
I, I go and ask the engineer if there's anything they can do about that, you know, before it got set, and then if, uh, the STB try to come back, not getting STB to come back out here, it's very difficult. But they, we wanted them to get that, um, completed, and I think that, that pipe, uh, once the engineers are there, just letting know if there's something that they can do, and I, and I get back to you and let you know.
Tonight, I, I never did do name calling, y'all notice, because I learned, when everybody is supporting you and everybody is helping you, you don't do name calling, because you gonna hit somebody, and then tell, to tell the OC or everything, so I thanks everybody again. Uh, wanting to call a name, I caught myself, do not call names, because we gonna miss on, so too many people involved again, and I appreciate you, I, I learned a lot, and let's keep moving forward, it, don't, don't look back, yeah, I talk to my daughter all the time, don't look back, uh, y'all, y'all looking at the next cookie, aware. Y'all see her, that, that, that's the next cookie right there. Oh, she prepared it, this cookie here is winding down, that cookie there, take it off.
Yeah, we're gonna have Juneteenth weekend, this weekend, coming out. Man, we gotta do somebody in hospital thing, we gotta talk about it, Lee. Somebody Lee that we had, I found out, he said he did vote for us, I found out he did not. He did not, he said people drive to Columbus, he left it at there, so I don't know, I saw what I was gonna say. Anyway, we need to think about, also, maybe I get a hospital here in Aliceville, and raise taxes or do something, can't keep doing the same thing, got same board up there, ain't nothing happening, same hospital board, ain't nothing happening, so we need to stack out the box and make something there, thank you.
Uh, thank you councilman, uh, I got a few things y'all bear with me, I'm gonna try to, since I got y'all here, that way y'all can, uh, get out here at the public park. Speaking of, since we talking about hospital, I I spoke with Mr. Allen, uh, by email, he did call me yesterday, but I, uh, I wasn't in the mind, right mindset to talk to him, so I have a call him back and speak with him. My only concern about it is that Senator Allen, uh, although he represents Pickens County, uh, decided to vote yes for the budget. Now, being if you voted no, it still wouldn't have came in, however, it would show that he represents the people in Pickens County. Um, so that being said, according to him, which you can take it or leave it, I'll leave it, he said that he's, he's gonna continue to fight for it and, and all those things, but he showing what he's gonna do already, so what can we do? Uh, what we can do is, oh, get us, we can vote, no more, yeah, and then also, we can start getting ourselves, uh, to be in better shape physically, and being in better health, because if we are in better health, then we won't have to go to the hospital all the time. So look for some new things, um, you know, in the, in the future, about health initiatives and joining and doing some things, because if we get in better health, then we won't have to worry about going to the hospital for everything that goes on, uh, maybe eating one cheeseburger, one piece of fresh cheese, instead of two cheeseburgers, you know what I'm saying? I know my mayor make them good down there. Uh, you know, I said, those, those are the things that we gonna have to start considering as a people, uh, because one of the things that shocked me with, uh, with Aliceville was, we have a lot of people who are prediabetic and diabetic, who don't even know that they're prediabetic and diabetic, and by the time that they get to certain places, they, their sugar has bottomed out, or we have people who are not taking their medicine, and they're supposed to be taking their medicine, whoever I'm talking to in this room. So, you know what I'm saying, so please ma'am, please sir, take your medicine, do the thing that you can do to prevent your health from getting to the stage where we need to call the ambulance or the hospital, or the, uh, helicopter, because at that point, it's almost too late. Uh, you know what I'm saying, so we want to make sure that, you know, you be in your best health, on July, I just found out today, on July the thirteenth, July the thirteenth, July the thirteenth, July the thirteenth, at twelve o'clock, there will be, uh, the grand opening for Whitley Health Center. Now, I'm happy about that, because that one, that's my baby there, because we fought hard as a council and, and people going out, trying to recruit somebody to come to the city of Aliceville. We love our doctors that we currently have, but we know they can be overwhelmed and they may need some assistance, so on July the thirteenth, if you can, please ma'am, please sir, come out, see the, uh, grand opening of the Whitley Health Clinic, um, the, I know a lot of talk has been going on about water and sewer, everybody looked on and saw what's going on with, with our neighbors, uh, to the north, and, you know, our, our prayers are with them, and, uh, and they'll, and as they go through, uh, what they going through, they have an awesome mayor, and she's, uh, she's kicking behind and trying to get them, uh, together, uh, she inherited that problem, and she's doing a fantastic job with what she's, what she's inherited. That being said, a lot of people have came to us and asked, well, what is Aliceville gonna do to make sure that we're not in a situation where that comes in? Uh, we work closely as a council with, uh, our water board, um, and we've, uh, we're in the process of securing grants to try to improve our water system. As, uh, as new information comes out about it, we've applied for a four million dollar, uh, grant to help restore our water system. Our water system isn't bad, we're meeting our criteria, but the minute that you put it in the ground, it starts going bad, so, um, that being said, we're gonna look for about four million dollars worth of improvement, and, uh, that's gonna come from the B I L funds that came from the federal government, the Build Back Better Plan, uh, by President Biden, uh, or some of the ARPA funds that came, uh, as well, so we're looking to try to get some of those funds to come in Aliceville and, uh, and help make our, uh, water and sewer system better. Uh, the last thing that I want to mention is after, well, I would say Juneteenth last, but the last thing I want to do is announce that we did receive a Brown's, a Brownfield Grant for the Aliceville Cotton Mill, alright, so what does that mean? A Brownfield Grant, uh, everyone's heard of the EPA, EPA comes in and they'll fine, but they, they find that you're not holding to the standard. Uh, the Brownfield is the reverse of that, uh, and it's a grant that helps you come in and restore, uh, various areas that have been dilapidated. We identified multiple areas around the city, specifically though, focusing on the cotton mill village, uh, area where the old footer loom has collapsed, uh, some of the old gas stations, the old hospital, uh, and they're gonna look and do some studies to try to clean those areas up, and try to make them useful for individuals to want to invest their business here in Aliceville. So this is pretty significant, we applied last year and we failed, we didn't get it, we listened to the suggestions that we, that we, uh, needed to make, uh, and then we reapplied this year and we were successful, so I'm very proud of this council, uh, and the, uh, and the team, um, and the city hall and beyond that have helped make that happen, because that's very significant, they'll spend, um, various amounts of funds to try to do studies, and then hopefully get that to a point to where they'll come in and clean that up, and it's won't, they won't be responsible for the city, because it is a liability for us, uh, and we want to make sure that we remove that, um, to the fullest extent possible. The last being said, Juneteenth, brand new holiday, this is what, two years old, I think, so please ma'am, please sir, familiarize yourself with Juneteenth. On Saturday, there will be, well, actually on Friday, we have a baseball game at the, uh, Aliceville Park for our high school softball team, um, Saturday afternoon, they have something to write, principal here, you got something? Basketball, that game is the afternoon, on that Saturday, uh, and then during, from eleven to two, you'll have the Juneteenth Festival, we'll have water slides for kids, we'll have some food, uh, games, fun, and then on the nineteenth, which is that Monday, in Saps, uh, there will be another Juneteenth Festival. So there's no reason why you shouldn't be celebrating Juneteenth, alright, it's a holiday that we all symbolize the pride of freedom in Texas, uh, when the slaves were free. Uh, and it's a significant holiday, and it's something that we should, uh, be proud of and recognize, so with that being said, um, we don't have anything else on like entertain emotions, but, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I do have, uh, physical permits here from my local sheriff, you want to feel free to fill out to get your physical permit, I do have that application here. I've yet to fill out and take it to the sheriff's office, uh, myself and Chief Jones, that's been a lot of work, but we still get our physical permit, so I advise you guys to still get your physical permit as well.
And since we got a crowd, I want to say this, if you interested in signing up to be on a committee, we about to re, add people on committees and take the folks off. Y'all have already came to the council meeting, long as they don't last as long, sometimes they do, but we want you to be actively involved in your community, so if you want to be a part of a committee, please don't leave here today without writing your name down and your number on the sheet of paper that, uh, Ms. Darnick is gonna have on her desk. Please ma'am, please sir, don't be scared, if you, if you see some, say some, what do you want to say, the boss? If you see some, say some, so you can talk some, there we go, with that being said, let's talk to the council meeting and, uh,
there's a motion, there's also a, 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 Ms. Cobb, Ms. Cobb, go ahead, yes ma'am.
Look at my hands, stand up. Standing there, everybody. Everybody over here. I'd like to say to you, I thank you all, we have done, that's what we do, going out with the quartet group, we spirit the faith, anytime we ask you to do something, we did, and we continue to do it. And like I said to you, I got you some different flavor. And, uh, because you are a different man. And what I'd say to you, get your sleep, literally, and I also have something for you. He love the eggs and sausage and bacon with jazz, and he also love that fried chicken, you got enough on here to get your eggs, your chicken, and whatever else.
Jack Card, I appreciate it, and on behalf of my little grandmother, she appreciate it.